Thank you so much, everyone, for joining us. Thank you to the All People's Fresh Market and the wonderful people who make this place work. I mean, thank you for hosting us, but actually, truly, thank you for doing what you do on a daily basis. This is an incredible resource on the South Side, and we are just fortunate that you are allowing us at 10:00 in the morning to take over for less than an hour, we promise, so that you can get back to the work. I want to acknowledge my colleagues. I know Councilmember Tyson is a big supporter of the work to help provide fresh foods in our neighborhoods, and she really wishes she could be here. She wanted me to say hello. So, why are we here today? Well, a large part of our success in Columbus has been our ability to attract new businesses, create new jobs, and as often as possible, retain talented workers. But the reality is that our growth and prosperity in Columbus are not being experienced equally in different neighborhoods and for all families in the same way. So up until recently, our incentive policies did not reflect the unique opportunities and challenges in each neighborhood. That is why the City Council worked with Mayor Ginther and Director Shoney to do a comprehensive review of Columbus's tax incentive policies for housing and job growth. We are here to announce a new policy that will create a $15 minimum hourly wage for any job that receives a tax incentive from the city of Columbus. The goal of this policy is simple: to leverage our job incentive programs to bring living wage jobs to our local economy. This is important because not all jobs are created equal. When a job doesn't pay a living wage, employees struggle to support their families, the opportunity gap widens, and many families must rely on public assistance to bridge the gap. By implementing this new policy, we will ensure that when we use tax dollars to bring a new job to Columbus, that job will always pay a living wage. So, we are here today because of -- we are here at this location today because of the resources of All People's Fresh Market, but also because of the services provided by Community Development for All People, which play an important role in bridging the opportunity gap for many Columbus families. For families who do not earn a wage that can support their family, these services are especially critical. But we're also here because Community Development for All People pays their employees at least $15 per hour. I am proud to be joined by Reverend John Edgar, the Executive Director of Community Development for All People. Thank you for hosting this morning and for your ongoing work to make an impact in our community. Can you please take a moment to talk about why the opportunity to earn a living wage is so important for the individuals you serve, and then why you decided, as an employer, to pay at least $15 an hour?
Sure. Councilmember Brown, we are really thrilled to have you here and to be hosting this hearing. This is an issue that's really important to our community because if we just start with this first statistic, that Columbus, Ohio, Central Ohio, have one of the largest number of people who are struggling with poverty even though we have one of the lowest unemployment rates. So, in other words, we have a whole bunch of folks whose income is below 200% of the poverty level, and yet these are people who go to work, and we believe that, as a community, we can do better. So, that gets lived out in various ways for us. First of all, we serve about 20,000 different individuals each year who are folks whose income is below 200% of the poverty level. This market has -- that is its primary audience, and we have become the largest point of distribution for food within the entire 20-county area of the Mid-Ohio Food Bank. And people come because this is a place where it is affordable to have the foods that help us to eat healthy. So, if you look around, this is not a traditional food pantry; rather, it is a market that is primarily fruits and vegetables, eggs and other items that allow people to eat healthy. And so, that's part of folks wanting to thrive for themselves and their families. And when people don't have a livable -- living wage, these kinds of services are really crucial. In a little bit, you'll hear from Desiree Waters, who runs our free store that has a similar mission of providing direct support to folks who don't have adequate income. So, it's important that we care for one another, and we believe that the best way to care for those in our community is to give people the opportunity to earn a living wage. And so, as Councilmember Brown indicated, a few years ago, we made the decision as a nonprofit that we couldn't speak to this issue unless we actually paid our own employees a living wage. So, all of our full-time employees make at least $15 an hour. And by the way, just for what it's worth, we took the lead on that based upon action of other nonprofits. In particular, Matt Habash, who's the Executive Director of Mid-Ohio Food Bank, for a number of years now, has been insisting that all of their employees receive a living wage. So, what is happening here is really crucial. The only -- I think the last thing that I would add before turning it over to Desiree is just to say that, from my perspective, and I'm not speaking for anyone other than myself, this is just the tip of the iceberg. It's great to see the city of Columbus find a way to say that if a job is going to count for credit in the tax incentive, that it has to be at $15 an hour. I look forward to the day when the entire state has a living wage of at least $15 an hour. And we have to start somewhere, and we are. So, part of what the city can do is this legislation. What any of us can do as an employer on a voluntary basis is say, "We're going to set the standard," and invite others to kind of get up to that higher ground. So, these initiatives are great. Doing what we can voluntarily is wonderful, and ultimately, everybody in this state who goes to work deserves a living wage. And so, now, I would like to introduce to you Desiree Waters, who runs the -- you know, I met this free store across the street. It's part of the work of Community Development for All People, and I'd invite you to share a little bit about what we do and your own experience.
Good morning. Excited to be here. Working part of Community Development has been life-changing for me. Being a member of the church and being unemployed, and then finding part-time work, I used the free store to clothe myself and my daughter. So, being one of the shoppers and the customers there, I know what it's like to have to rely on services in the community to provide just basic needs for my family. Once the opportunity opened where I could actually apply for a position there, I did. And not only did it help provide the money that I was making there, the basic needs, but the money that I was making, I could actually use that for other things other than clothing and when the fresh market opened, for food. It was an opportunity to be a part of something that I could actually say, "I walked in their shoes." And just three months ago, I was promoted to Director. So, my position there is more coming from a side of just being passionate about what I do and what I do every single day. Without making the money that I did, I would probably still be using public assistance for healthcare for my daughter and for myself, struggling day-to-day figuring out what -- how we were going to eat, or even provide shoes, clothing, and things of that nature for her. So, I think it's important that making that amount of money and being able to be a part of something here on the South Side is key. We don't always know the challenges that people that come through our free store that they face, but we do know that there is a service there that's being provided every single day where we can help someone. And I always say that this is my dream job because every day, I can come into the free store and I know that I'm going to help someone. We service anywhere between 100 to 150 people a day. And being able to have them come in without any questions asked, any type of identification or anything, just allowing them to come in and take that stress off of them of what they're going to do with the money that they are making, that they can actually have free items every single day. And I enjoy what I do, and I see that the vision that Pastor John has out there for each and every one of us as far as Community Development, and I see it being played out every single day. So, being here today, sharing part of my story, I think it's important that people see that the South Side is growing, and what we're doing here is something not only reaching just South Side, but we have people that come in from all over Columbus that use our services at the free store. So, I'm just appreciative and just full of gratitude today.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Now, I just met you, Desiree, so I don't know you terribly well, but I know you're passionate about your job. Something tells me you're very good at your job because you just got promoted. And I think it's important to point out that when employers pay $15 an hour, it's not just because they have a big heart, not saying you don't have a big heart, but it allows employers to attract and then retain talent like Desiree.
Absolutely.
When Desiree can support her family, she can actually come to work and share that talent every single day. So, I just thank you for telling your story, and thanks for the work you do, but I just was really feeling that when you spoke, that this is really about employers being able to attract and retain talent, talented employees. So, thank you. So, I want to recognize Council President Shannon Hardin, who fellow South Side resident. And you can join us. We have a stool if you want. Okay, all right. I know it would be all commotion to get the stool up here and everything. Thank you for being here, Council President, and for supporting this from day one. So, earlier this summer, we rolled out changes to our housing incentive policies that will harness the market energy in Columbus into smart growth and more affordable housing options. These jobs growth incentive changes that we are talking about today have to do specifically with the income tax-based incentives we utilize to encourage the creation of new jobs. It was sort of the second part of that study, which we took to four different neighborhoods, including the South Side, to educate residents about what we heard. Director Shoney did a lot of really in-depth analysis and presentation, and probably got sick of that PowerPoint and never wants to see it again because he presented it so many times. But the incentives help create new job opportunities for residents, and they also increase support for the services that the city provides because they bring in those jobs that increase our tax revenue. And we want to -- so, I want to kind of shift to Director Shoney to talk about the -- another component of the legislation, which is a review of our tax incentive policies and how they relate to overall business practices. So, the department has developed a new scorecard system that more clearly defines what the city expects from an employer in order to receive a tax incentive. And it's some of that qualitative review that the department does on a regular basis that they've always done, but you're helping to kind of crystallize it. And that's an important part of what we want to make sure the public understands today. I want to remind folks that there are speaker slips in the back. After Director Shoney presents, we will take speakers. Director Shoney?
First, let me begin by thanking you. One of the things that I love about not only Councilmember Brown and the Council President, but all of our council members is they push us to never accept "good is good enough." And we've been doing a good job, but it's never good enough for our residents. I also want to thank Reverend Edgar and Desiree for putting this facility together. I have to say, it's really distracting for me because I'm sitting up here and I'm thinking, "We should actually be doing a cooking show today."
Yeah.
You know, my favorite way to cook plantains.
We do cooking demonstrations.
Yeah, I know. And it's like, so, here's a potato, run around, grab some things, put together a meal for us. And I actually think I can handle it, you guys and that. I'm pretty good at that. So, but having a facility like this that provides services and the ability for anyone to come into this place and see how they can put together a good, quality, home-cooked meal for their family is an amazing resource. And, you know, I feel like it's -- every two weeks, I need to be somewhere where I'm singing Reverend Edgar's praises because he does such good work. And I do want to thank him and his whole team for the work that they do and for hosting us today. I could go on, but I know we only have an hour. So, we're here to talk about $15 an hour because that is a fundamental element to how people are compensated. Wages are the thing we focus on the most. But in going through the incentive study, we discovered that we need to do a better job of taking into account the entire picture of what a company does for its employees and for the city when we look at how we determine incentives. And so, we put together -- one of the recommendations coming out of the incentive study was that we put together a scorecard that forces us to do those things every day that we've been doing every other day, if you will. We've been looking at, okay, what is this company doing on this? What is this company doing on that? And taking that into account in an informal way. But you don't do it well until you formalize it, and you don't make sure that you're doing it every day and with every project until you formalize it. So, we've gone through the process of really formalizing that, and I promise, I am not going to read this chart, and I'm not going to ask you to read it. But this is just an example of what we're going to be going through with every project that we do in the city. And what this will have us doing is evaluating not only how many jobs do they have, and not only how much are they paying, but what kind of neighborhood is it located in.
We're in a working setting here, you know?
I thought maybe it was Councilmember Brown knows I like to talk, and so she found some kind of a -- we don't have a buzzer, but they needed one for me anyway. The -- there's always a need to look at where -- how bad does the neighborhood need the jobs? And if we've got a -- if somebody's willing to put jobs in a neighborhood that really needs it, we need to do more to help them. If a company is doing things like providing childcare for their employees, we need to do more to help them. And so, what this tool allows us to do is really formalize how we look at that. And also, what it does is, we're going to put this out there publicly so that companies, when they walk in the door to see us, they know we're going to ask about what are they doing on healthcare? What are they doing on childcare? We're going to support you if you're willing to do something more. We're going to support you if you're willing to go somewhere different. We can't tell people where to go. We can't tell them what to do, but we can support them when they do the right thing. And that's what this tool really allows us to do and really forces us to do on a regular basis. So, I want to, again, thank Councilmember Brown, Council President Hardin, and the entire council for walking through this journey with us and helping us do our jobs better.
Great. Thank you, Director Shoney. And so, I want to emphasize, what we're doing on Monday is we are codifying the baseline wage for what any job that's incentivized has to pay, and that's $15 an hour. And what the -- so, we're hearing that for final vote on Monday. And what the Director spelled out is, you know, I used to work in economic development, and I know that the department already used a lot of this kind of qualitative review when they worked with companies on, you know, a possible incentive structure. But what's important is that they -- and what we found from the study is not everybody understands that process, and so what the department has done is made it crystal clear what those values are that we want to see from companies that we work with to help them grow. So, thank you, Director, for going through that. Do we have any speaker slips? Nope? Okay, all right. Well, you know, if there are any questions, we'd love to take them. We'll take media questions afterwards, if that's all right, but if there are any questions from the people, feel free to. If not, I really want to thank, again, All People's Fresh Market and Community Development for All People for hosting us. I really want to point out a couple of folks in the department that were so critical to getting this done. Obviously, Director Shoney, he gets all the glory under the bright lights here. I know you find it very glorifying, yes. But Quentin Harris, in the back by the eggs. He is the Deputy Director for Economic Development and did just an incredible amount of work to bring this to something that was sort of a germ of an idea, especially the scorecard in the study that we did, and to really bring it into something that's real that the department can use. So, thank you for that. And thank you to Hannah Reed as well.
She's back by the ice cream.
Yeah, back by the ice cream. There we go.
Oh. Oh, it's coleslaw. It looks like ice cream from here.
Just as long as when you open it, you don't think it's ice cream, and then take a bite of coleslaw. And I want to thank our council team as well. James Carmine in my office, Kelsey Ellingson in my office, and then Andrew Dyer, who drafted in our policy office, who drafted this legislation. Between now and Monday, if anyone has questions about the legislation, if anyone has input about the legislation, please don't ever hesitate to contact us directly. We are really excited to put this forward, and we thank Council President Hardin for being with us in lockstep from day one. With that, thank you, and that concludes our hearing.
Oh, you did.
Oh, yes.
Sorry. I'm very lousy.
Oh, sorry. Question? Yeah. There's a microphone for comment.
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about the purpose of the Department of Economic Development and some of the priorities. So, are you looking to attract specific types of jobs in specific neighborhoods, or is it any job in any neighborhood?
That's a great question, and it's one of balance. At some level, we're looking to make sure that we have a full spectrum of employment opportunities for all of our residents. Where we focus is on those jobs that have a decision to make about where they go. So, generally speaking, retailers are going to follow what the market data tells them. What we're really concentrating on is those businesses that have a choice about where they go and making sure that they choose to employ in the city of Columbus. So, that's one filter. The other filter is then looking at what are the kinds of jobs that they're offering, and what are the other kinds of things that they're doing. So, looking at it and saying, okay, do we have -- are we going after a full portfolio, a full spectrum of the kinds of jobs that we need to have in the city, and putting our most effort at where we have the most value? So, some of that is going after high-wage jobs. Some of that is going after things, making sure that we've got jobs that are helping people who are starting their way up the career, starting their way through a career ladder, are looking to get into things. So, you see logistics jobs being a great entry point for a lot of folks into certain kinds of work. You see call centers being another one. The key of this is saying -- the key in this legislation for us is really saying, one of the -- one of the minimum requirements, though, is that you've got to be starting people out at 50. You've got -- we're not going to incentivize your jobs that are below $15 an hour. If you're below $15 an hour, that's your choice, but we're not going to participate in that.
Are you concerned that there might be an unintended consequence to that? One of the advantages that a disadvantaged neighborhood would have is a cheaper workforce. Are you concerned at all that this takes that off the table?
It's something we talked a lot about through the process. It's a balancing act. I mean, there is a level of saying, you know, there's a point at which putting public dollars into a job that pays a certain level just isn't the right thing to do. When you see companies like Amazon saying, "We're going to pay all of our workforce $15 an hour," or when you see organizations like Community Development for All People saying they're going to pay all their folks $15 an hour, we feel comfortable saying that we've set a reasonable standard for city incentives and a standard that we think we can meet in all of our neighborhoods.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I mean, I'd probe a little bit on sort of what that means, cheaper workforce, not to be too provocative, but a living wage is a living wage. Just because somebody might be able to accept paying, you know, taking a job that pays less than that because they don't have other options, doesn't mean it costs them less to support their family. And it's really important that if we're going to participate with the city's resources in the creation of a job, that that job supports a family.
Sure. I would -- I'm glad that you brought up logistics. I actually work for a logistics company that's located both in Urban Crest and the city of Columbus. Our starting pay rate is currently $14.50 an hour, but we're an incredibly benefits-rich company. So, you mentioned the scorecard. In our case, we're an employee-owned company, so it is an ESOP. It's a 100% employee-owned company. So, the $14.50 an hour is really just the hourly wage, but when you look at the totality of the compensation package, it's significantly higher than typically like an Amazon that would start at $15 an hour but has less benefits. How is that taken into account?
Well, I mean, I think, first of all, the department, you know, we speak with every employer who's interested in growing, and so we'd want to speak with you. If you're interested in creating jobs and you want to look to the city to how we can help you do that, then we want to talk to you and figure out ways to do it. And, you know, I think that the scorecard takes into account all of these other things. The wage is an important factor, and, you know, that perhaps use of a city incentive would help you to actually elevate some of those wages in your kind of growth plan. I don't know that. I'm not you. I don't run your company. But, you know, that's the kinds of things that we could talk about. And genuinely, if you're thinking about growing your company, please come talk to us.
Okay, so you are still open to having those conversations?
Yes. And not to get into a really technical discussion in front of 50 other people. The other thing we -- but the other thing we find typically is that if somebody's that as close as you are, when you look at, okay, where are my employees going to be who've stayed with me for a year? You get a year out, those -- a lot of the times, we find, those employees are going to be at $15 an hour, and then we can kick in the incentives when you hit that point.
Got it. All right. I appreciate your input. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a member of the South Side Area Commission here, Atticus Gardner, who maybe has some things he would offer about why this is an important issue.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, as a commission, I certainly, I can speak personally for myself as an area commissioner who represents the neighborhood located just east here of Parsons, Southern Orchards. And, you know, we, as a commission, have had incredible partnerships. I mean, obviously, you know, working, you know, to advise City Council on issues that pertain to the districts that we represent here on the South Side and, you know, giving City Council feedback on what we're hearing from the community, which is, in fact, you know, our primary job is to advise City Council on those issues. And so, of course, you know, what we've heard within our community, a community that is, in fact, impoverished, particularly east of Parsons, is that people want a livable wage and that they need a livable wage. And of course, we partner with wonderful organizations like Community Development for All People, who have great partnerships with organizations like Naishmi Children's Hospital and Goodwill and Ohio State University. They've opened an incredible Career Workforce Training Center right there on Whittier. So, this has been a wonderful partnership, and we were great supporters of Career Gateway when it opened, which is working to leverage their partnerships to encourage employers to make a livable wage. So, as far as the commission is concerned, I can speak personally for myself as a commissioner. Of course, I can't speak for my colleagues on the commission that this is an ordinance that I support. I'm thrilled to see. And again, I think you said it best, this is the tip of the iceberg, but it's a wonderful place to start, and it brings something to light that is extremely important for our community. So, I'm very grateful to Councilwoman Brown for this, and thank you to Desiree for sharing your story. I was grateful to hear from you. So, thanks.
Did I see we have one more comment? No? All right. Seeing nothing else? Oh, we did? We do have one more.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to add, my name is Tricia Kovacs. I work over at Bucks for All People, but this hits home for me because I help out my niece and nephew whose mom passed away, and my niece just finished school, so she's working now and not making $15 an hour. She's not going to be able to get Medicaid next year, and we're struggling with how she can afford. Although I love the Affordable Care Act, the deductibles are so unaffordable, but so having a $15 wage would help her a lot. She doesn't live in Columbus, so -- but anyway, I think it's a great incentive, and I'm really glad the city's doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
I don't even mind. I can cut football.
Well, it's for TV purposes. Sorry. I can hear you.
John knows. I've got to say something. I see people -- I moved down here about a year and a half ago, and I see a lot of people walking down here with, how can I put this? Their glasses of scarcity. There isn't enough in this world, and there's plenty in this world for all of us. And what you're doing is, it's about time another city took a stand for this because the people will -- chests will come out, and their heads will be raised, and they'll feel more valuable and have more merit in this world. And who knows when somebody's and their pay is doubled, they see how it works and goes, "Oh, I can start my own company." And then that grows another whole thing. So, I assume you have other cities, you've studied this, how it works. Are there a lot of cities that have done this and has been successful?
So, well, what we -- I mean, Steve could actually answer this a little bit better. I will say that the reason for the study that we did, the full review of our incentives, was so that we could look at how other cities kind of prioritize their incentive packages. And one of the things I took away from the study that the consultant said is incentivize what you care about, if you will, like incentivize an outcome, right? You're not just -- it's not just job creation for the sake of job creation, but like incentivize towards -- some cities do an industry sector, you know, prioritize certain industry sectors if they're trying to grow those. So, we really looked at it through a wage lens. I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, that was a great answer.
Okay. Yeah. Cool. Thank you. All right. Any other? Yeah?
I do have, in fact, actually, I have one more question. So, John, thank you for putting me on the spot. I just, I'm curious to know as to, you know, we offer these incentives for jobs that move here into the city of Columbus. I'm just --
I'm just curious as to what kind of accountability there will be, you know, when they get this incentive, you know, they've, they've promised to provide a $15, you know, minimum wage. You know, what will the process be? What's the timeline? If they don't fulfill that promise, you know, what, what, what action will the city take to ensure that they either follow through on, on their promise or, you know?
Want to talk about Bob Jones?
Yes, we have a gentleman in our, in our office named Bob Jones, who, his job is to track every agreement that we have related to our jobs incentive, and within that, track every employee that we are incentivizing and make sure that they're earning wages that meet our standards. And make sure that companies are reporting that information. We report that information to council every year. Companies have to file an annual report by March?
March 31st.
March 31st of every year, listing who they are saying they have, they want to claim incentives on, how much they earned, what their wage was, all that stuff. So, we have all that information, and we go through it, and we track it, and we look to make sure that the numbers make sense and do some verification. So, it is a performance-based incentive. We don't put money out up front. We make folks show us that they actually perform, and then we pay them out.
Okay. Great. All right. Seeing no other questions, I think for real this time. This concludes our hearing. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. It was really nice to meet you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.